This conference will now be recorded.
All right, good evening and welcome to the Alpena City Council meeting of January 3rd, 2023. Call the order, please.
Mayor Pro Tem Johnson?
Here.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Here.
Councilmember Nowak is excused. Councilmember Walchek?
Here.
And Mayor Walagora?
Here.
Please rise for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda for this evening.
Second.
Mayor Pro Tem Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilmember Walchek?
Yes.
And Mayor Walagora?
Hi.
Any proposed modifications? You. Approval of minutes for regular session of December 19th, 2022, any issues or? Hey, citizens appearing before council on agenda and non-agenda items are allowed five minutes each to address. To address their concerns, I'm sorry. This is the only time during tonight's meeting where you're allowed to address counsel. If you'd like to do so, please come to the podium and state your name and address for our clerk's records.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Kevin Currier, 240 South State Avenue, Alpena, Michigan. I am here, and I hope this is the right time to talk about the curbside amendment that is on for today. So, thank you for all the time and effort that you have put into this and going back and forth with us. There is one, I think would be provision in there. The state said all curbside pickup orders must be paid in advance. Exchange of payment shall not occur outside. While this is an absolute step in the right direction, I would respectfully ask for the curbside amendment to allow the accepting of payment in the parking area. Because of that, if this were any other retailer, it would not be an issue for prepay. The problem is because we are cannabis, we do not have access to standard banking. We don't have access to standard point-of-sale system, to sale system, to basically everything a normal retailer would have access to. Because of this, prepayment online is a huge hurdle to access for our patients and guests. We are not allowed to use credit cards, or debit cards, or PayPal, or Square, or anything like that on our online system. We've had prepayment for the last four months, to which we have had 20 successful people sign up for that prepayment option. It is cumbersome. You have to have a bank account for it to happen because it's a ACH payment. That's the only option they have in the cannabis industry. So, for a guest to have this option for curbside, they would have to have access to internet, be able to use the online checking option, have a checking account. And we've actually switched systems four ti- or two times, I'm sorry, because they did not have local Alpena banks listed in their system as an option to choose from. So, for that, we are asking for the amendment to include the possibility of taking payment on-site. Pretty much it, thank you.
Kevin, you're gonna stay, I assume?
Yes.
Because I might have a couple of questions I'd rather not get involved with now.
Absolutely.
In the discussion, I might have a couple of questions for you to clarify.
I'll be here, thank you.
Anyone else that's live in the room? Not alive, but live? Yes, please.
General questions or anything specific?
Public comment.
On something specific?
To you, yes.
Okay.
There is no specific topic that you're required to state.
A little in the middle, and I didn't wanna.
Oh, okay, no.
You know, go off. Okay. My name is Annette Carstens, 1893 Greenfield Drive, Osneak, and thank you for hearing me today. This is in regards to a property my husband and I own through our business, ARC Family Enterprises, which is rental houses. And we bought the property in question on 724 Clinton Street in December of 2018 from Roger Bauer, executor for the estate of his late Uncle Claude Bauer. This is our only property within the city limits, and following a conversation with friends regarding city property taxes, I realized that the taxes on this property were unreasonably high, and upon research and property comparisons with local realtors and the online realty website Zillow, I further found this to also be the case. All of the properties that were similar to ours in square footage and amenities had property taxes that were consistently roughly half of what our property taxes were. All of the properties that had similar tax amounts, as ours consistently featured much more square footage, attached multi-car garage, larger lots, basements, one even had a full acre of lake frontage just outside the city limits. The treasurer's office instructed me on how to file a dispute, which I did at the appropriate time during 2021. In that dispute, I provided the detailed description of each property that I used for comparison, along with pages printed from the Zillow and all of that. The dispute was denied and ruled as no evidence. I didn't know at the time that wasn't the evidence that they were looking for. They didn't want comparisons. So, but I would have thought at least that the city assessor would have looked at it and said, wow, that is kinda off. But that didn't happen. Anyways, so I was instructed that on the denial, it said if I disagreed with the denial, I had to go to the tax tribunal. So, that's what I did. This has been a long drawn out thing, and certainly has been an education for me. And I actually thought that the tax tribunal would be more of a mediation panel that would read my information, and then they would say, wow, those taxes are high, and then they would, you know, have somebody look into it. But that's not what happened at all. So, I believe that there was an error in the way it was, the taxes were, the true cash value and the equalized value and stuff were entered into the columns. And the reason, so I believe that that is a possibility because Claude Bauer was an elderly man, and he went to live in an assisted living facility. And then the house, the rental house, was rented out. Roger Bauer, his nephew, was his executor and handled the bills for many years. Roger Bauer, being a very busy attorney, probably had someone in his office actually handle the bills. I don't picture Mr. Bauer receiving the rent check and, you know, writing the check, but I don't know. So, I believe that the true cash value amount was inadvertently entered into the state equalized value column, and it wasn't caught either by the elderly Mr. Claude Bauer, or the busy Roger Bauer, or his assistant. This error then made its way all the way to through the computerized system that we have now, where it seems to be deemed as gospel, without question. This house, according to the tax bill issued by the city, should have been worth $80,000 on December 31st of 2019. And that, that's clearly before the crazy increase of the housing markets and all that. So, please note that our business purchased the house for $37,000, nowhere near the $80,000, and after Roger Bauer had already had it on the market for a year at $50,000. So, do you? This isn't really a question, but do you believe that Mr. Bauer would have willingly sold an $80,000 house for $37,000, half of its true cash value, less than half? So, recently, the county treasurer, Ms. Ludlow, Ms. Ludlow, she was very nice. She explained to me that the city assessor does not necessarily do actual appraisals on properties with tax disputes. So, when he offered that denial, it was, it was for several reasons, but I understand that now. But he also, he uses a computer program and just enters the information into the computer program for the, from the tax description sheet in order to come up with the amounts that they plug in. However, if the information input into the program is incorrect, of course, you always get an incorrect amount. So, some of the information, I have to add here that I've since also had a certified appraisal by a local certified appraisal service that's been in business a long time, very respected and very knowledgeable gentleman, Saborn. So, some of the information that's incorrect is the house is listed as a three-bedroom, and it's only a two-bedroom. Not a big deal, but it just lends to the fact that there's incorrect information. It's listed as having vinyl double-hung windows, and the windows are all old aluminums with storms.
Sorry to interrupt, you got additional 30 seconds.
Okay. So, furthermore, city attorney Bill Pfeiffer contacted me by phone, so we had a tribunal hearing, and he contacted me by phone the day before and said, well, since it's appra- since the, your tax cash value, your true cash value says 80,000, and you, and our appraisal came out at 40,400, he said, how about if we go somewhere in the midi, in the middle, and I'll say the city assessor would agree to 60,000? And I said, no way, it's not a $60,000 house unless you're willing to buy it today, then I'll sell it to you for 60. And so, he said, well, what would be a number you could work with? So, he was back and forth. He's told me several times he was gonna bring this to the city council, and I continued to call and call and call and call and call, and I don't hear anything back from him. So, we have a hearing coming up, January 26th, with the tax tribunal, the Michigan Tax Tribunal. And, and it's more cost for the city, it's more cost for me, I have to actually hire.
You can have to finish up.
Okay. So, I guess this, I'm gonna hand, I'm just exactly what I just read, except for the pieces I didn't get to. I have copies for each of you. And I'm just not sure if Mr. Pfeiffer has ever brought this information to you. I don't even know who he is or what he looks like. He could be here. That's you? Why don't you ever call me back?
I don't wanna get into it here.
Okay.
But it's brought to council, it's on the agenda for tonight as well.
Wonderful. All right, well, here's the extra things.
Can you just leave?
And I'll give them to you. And.
I didn't cut you off just because.
I see you've got your name tag turned to the, to the audience, but, well, thank you very much, and I hope we can get this served and settled before we go to the tribunal.
Thank you, Annette.
I hire a court reporter.
Thank you. And you're welcome to stay, but I just wanna make sure that you, she's out. Oh, she's, that's closed session, I didn't want her sitting the whole time. All right.
Hello, my name's Michael Kramer.
Michael.
I live at 226 Fair Avenue, and I'd like to address the, the whole concept of curbside service. I addressed it once before, but I just, I think that it's important that I go at it again. I think we have to look at this as being convenient for people that need it. And this dispensary that I fought to get into the city, I didn't realize how good these people were in their approach to cannabis. I've been able to go in there and talk to cancer patients from friends together, and it's a great outreach that they're doing in the community. I think that curbside services, Kevin's describing it, would just help them reach more people that are, are, have a difficulty in getting around, or are timid enough not to wanna go into a dispensary at this point. I think that anybody, these people will work it out. So, I hope you can find it in, in whatever laws you have to deal with to help them work this out so they can set that up. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Michael. Anyone else here in the room? Anyone indicate on the virtual. All right, thank you. Close public comment, we'll move on. Tonight's consent agenda, A is bills to be allowed in the amount of $237,428.57. B is the collection of the 2023 property taxes for Alpena Public Schools. C is the approval of councilwoman Cindy Johnson and city manager Rachel Smolinski as representatives to the Northeast Michigan Materials Management Authority Board, with the first meeting being held on Thursday, January 19th, 2023 at 5:30. And D is a budget amendment to decrease the expense for the Thunder Bay River Center project in the amount of $8,050, which also decreases the amount needed from committed fund balance.
As we approve the consent agenda as printed.
Court.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilmember Walchek?
Yes.
Mayor Walagora?
Hi.
And Mayor Pro Tem Johnson?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Tonight, we have some presentations, where I'm assuming most of our guests are here for. First, we have retirement recognition for Joel Jett, retired Alpena Police Chief. And with us this evening is Chief Todd Woods from the Mackinac City Police Department, and President Northern Michigan Association of Chiefs, Chief Kyle Knight, Harbor Springs Police Department, and Secretary Treasurer for Northern Michigan Association of Chiefs, and Lieutenant Eric Hamp of the Alpena Police Department. And I think, Rachel? Okay.
Thank you. Well, I'll go first. I'm Kyle Knight, I'm the chief at Harbor Springs, and I have a couple of housekeeping things. First of all, I don't get over to the east side very often, and, and the city attorney might wanna represent one of you guys, because you sold one of our community leaders, you stole them from our community. And I finally got over here, so I don't know if the mayor, you would like me to take, or who, but, you know.
That's a trade?
But no, she was outstanding in our community, she came from Harbor Springs, and, and I hopefully, I've heard the great things from her. And the other thing I'd like to commend the council members on, and whoever was in decision, I recently wrote a reference letter for a lieutenant from Potawatsoke, who was appointed for their director's job. And in that reference letter, I put the fact that if you don't need a change of culture, and you have an internal candidate, that's who you should promote. And I commend you for choosing Eric Hamp as your next chief, because you don't need a change of culture here. Chief Jett's done a phenomenal job, and you have an internal candidate who would do outstanding jobs, so I wanna commend you on that. So, so now my interaction with Joel and my roast of Joel. No, I, I'll make this brief, but.
Take all the time you need.
No, my, I've, I moved to Harbor in 2017, and I was chief down in St. John's, Michigan, and worked for the Clint County Sheriff's Office down just north of Lansing. And I was part of the Mid-Michigan Chiefs Association. Whenever we went to conferences, whether it was up at Shanty Creek or down at the M.A. Grand, I always looked at the Northern Michigan Chiefs, and I thought, what a great group of people these guys are compared to, no offense to the, where I came from, but that Northern Michigan Chiefs, well, just, they were always well bonded. And I felt like they had something going that we didn't have. And so, luckily enough for me, in 17, I got to be chosen as the chief of Harbor Springs, and I became a member of that Northern Michigan Chiefs Association. And instantly, it was people like Joel and Todd that welcomed me in, and Joel, like, we didn't know each other from, till that moment, but he was, he welcomed me in, and we created this friendship and this bond, and it allowed me to be part of that group. And I was like, I talked at our first meeting, I said, I feel so neat that I'm part of this group, and it's people like Joel that made, that welcomed me, that makes it, that Northern Michigan Chiefs Association such an outstanding group. So, I just, I appreciate our friendship. He took me in as a downstater, and I'm an outsider, and he welcomed me, and he became a friend of mine, and congratulations to him, I'm envious, because we're about the same age and done this for about the same time, so congratulations to Joel. Well, thank you very much for letting us do this.
Thank you, Chief.
Yes, I'd like to reiterate on what Chief Knight said, I commend you on appointing Lieutenant Hamp as chief. Good guy, got to know him throughout the years, going to conferences with Chief Jett, and I just commend you guys for that. I wanna say good evening, I wanna thank the council for allowing us to be here tonight. I am Chief Todd Woods from the Mackinac City Police Department, and you've already met Chief Knight from Harbor Springs PD. Not only are we here tonight as representatives from the Northern Michigan Chiefs Association, but also as close friends to honor a good friend and colleague. We got tissues ready here? All right, because it's gonna go over there. For those of you that don't know about us or what we do, I'll give you a little background on us, on our association. The MACP, which is the Michigan Association of Chiefs of Police, they divide the state into five regions. Our group, which is the Northern Chiefs, is the biggest out of that, out of the five. It consists of a very large area that represents agencies as far south as East Tawas, kitty corner down all the way to Nogwego, and everything north, including the whole, entire Upper Peninsula. So, we are a huge group. We speak to, we speak as a collective voice for the agencies in our region, to advance our profession, to ensure our concerns are heard with our Michigan legislators. Last year, our association lost six chiefs to retirement. Joel, Kyle, and I traveled throughout our region presenting each of them a plaque from our association, not only for their law enforcement service, but their dedication to our association being involved. Even though we're very happy for them, we're also sad to see them go. So, tonight's plaque will go to good old lucky number seven. I have known Joel for over 25 years, or over 24 years, sorry. Over this last week, I was trying to figure out what I would say tonight that he doesn't already know. I remember when I first met Joel, at training here in Alpena, actually, he came up to me and he said, hello, I'm Joel Jett. And I said, hi, I'm Todd Woods. Even though we've never worked together, and we are an hour and a half, two hours apart from each other, I would see him at various trainings over the years. We became really good friends. Over five years ago, I was appointed chief, and I attended my first Northern Chiefs meeting. I remember seeing Joel once again, and it was, it's been a while since I've seen him, and we met there, and he congratulated me on my appointment. Over these last five years, we got to know each other even more and became closer as friends. We attended several chiefs conferences, and we also are on the MML's LEAF Committee, which LEAF stands for Law Enforcement Action Forum. Now, I could go on and on about Joel and our friendship, and telling you, telling him how good he is, but basically, I can sum it all up with this, you had me at hello. All joking aside, I recall great enthusiasm and pride he took in representing our police, our Alpena Police Department, wherever he went. Joel has been with our association for 11 years, and there's a lot of experience behind those years. One of the things I won't forget, will never forget, is his immediate willingness to contribute to our group in whatever discussion that was presented. He actively engaged in guiding ours, our organization. A combination of good common sense, good nature, and we all know, great sense of humor, was his key to being one of the most. Respecting individuals, I know. Oh, I think this is gonna happen.
Read through your nose.
Oh, yeah. After thinking about this presentation for over a week, I was trying to think of the words that best describe him, because Joel is absolutely one of the most intelligent individuals I know. He already knows what I think about him, but to recognize him tonight as a leader and as an individual, there, and that he represented his community well, these are the words that I thought that best described him. Honor, not just for his law enforcement service, but for his service for our country, being prior military. Two, compassion. He has one of the biggest hearts I know, and cares for his community. And last one. Man, that's tough. And the last one that I hold dear to my heart, and, and I know he does, and it's integrity. I apologize.
I'm fine, Chief.
Integrity, integrity as a law enforcement leader, for our law enforcement profession, and as an individual. He's a really good guy. So, sorry, Chief, we ask that you accept this plaque as a token of our admiration and gratitude for your 32 years of service, leadership, and most of all, your friendship. The Northern, the Northern Michigan Association Chiefs of Police presents this plaque to Chief Joel Jett, in recognition of your years of dedicated service to the Northern Michigan Chiefs Association. Your commitment to excellence was greatly appreciated and played a major role in the success of our association. In addition, your willingness to provide guidance and leadership to law enforcement in Northern Michigan has provided prosperity to all. Thank you, and job well done.
Like, those of you who watched the NFL game last night, what happened, like brotherhood, this is a brotherhood, especially Todd and Joel. They, they, if you watch them in action, they are like brothers, and they're two great people.
Let's jump up here, fellas, so would that be okay?
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
Jordy wants to sit up here.
Goodne, good evening, everybody. I'm gonna try to hold it together here. First of all, I'm Eric Hamp. Most everybody in here knows who I am, soon to be sworn in as your next police chief. I first wanna say thanks to Chief Knight and Chief Woods for making the trip over here. Thank you so much, and I know how much that means to Chief Jett as well. Thank you so much. I echo everything that they said. I kinda got straight to the point with mine, it's gonna be a lot shorter, but I just, tonight, we're here to gather to say thank you to Chief Jett. If you don't know, he served the city of Alpena for 32 years. Chief Jett rose through the ranks, he held titles of patrolman, sergeant, detective, and for the last 12 years, he was our chief of police. While tonight is bittersweet, we are excited for you to enjoy the next stage of your life. On behalf of the officers of the Alpena Police Department, we would like to thank you for your leadership these past 12 years. We know there's been many challenges along the way, but no, you have left the department in a position to thrive as we start the new year. I would like to personally thank you for your. For your mentorship that you have provided me during my time as second command of the department. Thanks to you, I am confident that I have the skills necessary to lead the department into the future. As many of you know, and I know council's heard this many times, Chief Jett refers to us as family. And if you've never worked in this line of work, you don't truly understand what that means. We laugh together, we cry together, we see things that most people never have to deal with in their lifetime. And through all this, we grow to become a tight, tight-knit group that we do call family. Chief, you will always be family to us. Think I was set up for failure? I think I was set up for failure going last year. So tonight, I told myself I wasn't gonna get too emotional. I failed. So tonight, I'm member, on behalf of the members of the Alpena Police Department, I am here to present a retirement plaque to Chief Jett. Chief, if I could have you come up? I'm gonna kind of hold up so everybody can see the plaque before I hand it to Chief Jett. So on the top are the eagles that Chief wore on his uniform for the last twelve years. We put those on the top of the plaque. On the left-hand side, obviously, is our patch and each star represents five years of service. And again, Chief had thirty-two years of service with the city of Alpena. And on the right side is our certificate of retirement that's signed by the city manager. Okay, Chief, we hope you proudly just spray the plaque at home and to remind you of the thirty-two wonderful years of service to the city of Alpena.
I'm gonna keep my, my speech very short tonight because many of you will be surprised by this. I'm actually at a loss for words, which never happens for me. I just want to say to my APD family, to my brother, the council, thank you for allowing me the privilege and the honor of being your chief.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so I'm gonna go ahead and just grab it. You know, thank you, everyone, for being here. Chief Knight and I know each other. In fact, he was, I had just gotten the job offer and he called me just a few minutes later. And I, he said, is there something you want to tell me? And I'm like, boy, you are good. Apparently, he just has Google Alerts, but. So, and thank you, Chief Wood, for being here and everyone who's come to honor Chief Jett. Joel, my friend, anyone who knows Joel, you know, it's, it's always Joel, my friend. And I've never been called ma'am so many times in my life, but thank you. I wear that with honor. Congratulations on your retirement. Thank you for thirty-two years of dedicated service to the city of Alpena. I have only had the pleasure of working you, with you for three years, but in that time, we certainly have had our share of challenges and, and it's been a joy to work through those with you. I found you to be one of the most genuine, kind, and ethical people that I know and it's been an honor and a privilege to work with you. Congratulations again and we wish you well in the next phase of life's adventure. Enjoy it. Sounds like you have some great plans ahead of you. You will be greatly missed. Now it's time to pass the torch. Onto the night, or onto, welcome Lieutenant Hamp as the next leader of the Alpena Police Department. Now, if I could have Joel and Dana join me up, up here. I'll pass it off to Joel for the pending ceremony and then our oath of office.
I don't have a speech. I just wanted to thank my family. I got quite a few family and extended family in the room and thanks to my staff and the fire department and other city employees that came tonight. I'm, I'm so thankful for this opportunity and I look forward to continuing the great service that the city is used to from the Alpena Police Department. So thank you so much. Kathy wanted to get a picture. If I can get my staff up here with Chief Jett real quick.
Need to do your, and then your. Let's make it official. Repeat after me. I, Eric Camp.
I, Eric Camp.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this state.
And the Constitution of this state.
And that I will faithfully perform.
And that I will faithfully perform.
The duties of.
The duties of.
The Office of Police Chief.
The Office of Police Chief.
In and for.
And and for.
The city of Alpena.
The city of Alpena.
County of Alpena.
County of Alpena.
And state of Michigan.
State of Michigan.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God. Thank you.
Hey, guys, come on up.
No, I'm gonna Photoshop you out of this.
All right. Thank you all for that. Next up, report of officers. It is the second reading of ordinance number twenty-two dash four eight three, which amends the city of Alpena zoning map and Bill Pfeifer will lead that off.
Assisted with council policy, this would not be read a second time unless any of the individual members would like it read. This does relate to property at four twenty-three South Seventh that was sold as a duplex, although not officially zoned properly at that point. But this is the new owner's request to have this rezoned from R two to RT.
Any issues? Anybody have anything come up with me? All right, I'll entertain a motion to a.
I move we adopt ordinance number two, twenty-two dash four eight three. Second.
Councilmember Wolteck?
Yes.
Mayor Waldeora?
Aye.
Mayor Pointon Johnson?
Yes.
And councilmember Mitchell?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Bill. Next up is the first reading of ordinance number twenty-three dash four eight four, which amends chapter eighteen, section eighteen dash one for the medical marijuana facilities and adult-use marijuana establishments.
This is ordinance number twenty-three dash four eight four. I will just summarize the changes. Be it ordained by the municipal council, the city of Alpena, state of Michigan as follows. On page two, under item B, there will be a change from adult-use marijuana establishment to, to make it plural establishments. On page five of fifteen, under H, the new language would state the term of each license shall expire on the same day as the state of Michigan license. I would be amended to say the annual license established pursuant to the above paragraph may be renewed, subject to renewal of the state of Michigan license and local approval. The license expires on the same day as the state of Michigan license. Under paragraph nine, A, second sentence would say all documents submitted by the city, or submitted, excuse me, to the city shall be submitted digitally. Hard copies may be requested. B one would add approved for pre-qualification letter from the state of Michigan. Numbers one through four would be renumbered two through five. Specifically, the last sentence of paragraph five would now state that applications not in completed status within one year of their initial submission must be resubmitted in their entirety and a new non-refundable application fee must be paid. Under section C, the language would state for medical marijuana facilities or adult-use marijuana establishments, the following shall apply except for secure transporters where applicable. Under C four, the language would state the applicant shall include a business location plan as outlined by the state of Michigan and should also include a daily operation schedule outlining opening and closing procedures. Moving to page seven, under number fifteen, it would say the applicant shall present a plan that includes a security system. So just add S there. On page nine of fifteen, under fourteen, license renewal, the new language would state an application to renew a medical marijuana facility or adult-use marijuana establishment shall be on file, shall be filed, excuse me, at least sixty days prior to the date of its expiration and the license may be extended up to sixty days pending renewal by the state of Michigan in verification of submission. Paragraph fourteen C would add a sentence at the end that would say the license will be considered null and void and all operations must cease by order of law enforcement. That relates to if somebody doesn't file in time and doesn't file a late application and pay the late fee, then they would automatically be null and void at that point until that's accomplished. On page ten of fifteen, under fifteen E, the new language would say the following actions constitute transfer of ownership and require a new application, application fee and approval by the local licensing authority. So there's just a slight change there. On page eleven of fifteen, under number seventeen B, about two-thirds of the way down the paragraph, it would state any medical marijuana facility or adult-use marijuana establishment that creates an ongoing nuisance condition as defined and contained in chapter fifty, nuisances of the city of Alpena Code of Ordinances. And that's, that's language that's added there. Under, on page twelve of fifteen, under general requirements and restrictions, under number one, general requirements, that second sentence of A would be struck. C would be labeled operations. Number one would stay the same. Number two would stay the same as far as the first paragraph, which would, well, there'd be one slight change. It would say facilities and establishments shall not provide drive-through services, but may provide curbside service based on an approved site plan. All curbside pickup orders must be paid for in advance and exchange of payment shall not occur outside. Number three would state approval from the state of Michigan to allow delivery to residential addresses must be provided to the city of Alpena once approved by the state of Michigan. Number four would state the growth and cultivation of marijuana outdoors is not permitted. Under one F three, the new language would state that monitor security cameras covering at a minimum all parking areas and curbside pickup areas would be required. So curbside pickup areas is the language that's added there. And the provisions of this ordinance will take effect ten days after being adopted by the municipal council and duly published. So those are the proposed changes that staff came up with for council's consideration.
And there's been a lot of, there's a lot, been a lot of information going back and forth just in the last couple of days and hours. So I just want to ask Rachel and/or Montiel if, if there are, is where we're at with the completed version? What your recommendation would be to, to move forward, whether? Because this is first reading.
Right.
So, but, but we've got some perhaps other gray areas that, if you want to address that or how do you want to?
I can. And then Montiel, if you would add to it. So one of the things that I wanted to take a closer look at and Montiel and I have been exchanging a lot of information today is related to the marijuana microbusiness. I think, you know, we really didn't vet it as well the last time when it was first integrated into the process, but it does include grow operations, but it's multi-purpose. You grow, you process, and there's retail there. And currently, and those are, that's a smaller, smaller operation of a hundred and fifty plants or less. And then there was something, and, and Montiel, you can explain the, the class A, the new classification, which our ordinance or zoning does not address. But just having a grow operation, even though it's indoors, I'm not sure having it in all of the business districts or commercially zoned districts is the best idea. So I'd like to take some time and bring back a recommendation from staff at the, for the second reading and then see where we go from there. And then I also want to have a little more discussion about grow and processing operations in general and talk about whether or not that's a good fit for the city.
Okay.
The only other thing I would add is that the microbusiness has a class A, which basically allows for up to, I think it's three hundred plants. So that is something that was changed recently. So we don't really address that specifically in the ordinance right now. So I think we need to go back and just look to see if we need to put that in somewhere.
Okay. And so, and what you're saying is, so, because we've had a couple of occasions where we've come back to a second reading with some, with, in the understanding that it would be slightly different.
Correct.
What we saw today. We saw today. Now, if it, so here are the scenarios. If, if that were the case and you add in your recommendations for microbusiness and it comes back next, and perhaps zoning as well, and it comes back for our second reading, we can, we can either approve that or say, yeah, well, we're going to move into a third reading.
Correct. You could send it back to staff or send it back to me and say, we, we don't approve this change or we do approve that change, or we'd like to see whatever additional changes that you suggested that, that.
Okay.
And it's my understanding then depending on what council decides to do with, the different types of facilities, grow operations, microbusinesses, there may be a zoning change required, just depending on what you do. And so there are circumstances in which we would need to have the zoning be approved along with that ordinance.
And that's a zone. So, so the zoning would change or the requirements in here as to where they can be will change?
Well, it could be.
Let me give you.
Depending on the direction of where we went with certain facilities. If we then ultimately wanted to change where they can be, then we would have to change the zoning ordinance as well. So.
For, for example, microbusinesses, if you, so currently they're in all the commercially-zoned districts. If you decide that you just want them in industrial, then you would have to go back and amend the ordinance because it's currently zoned in all of those districts.
So not this ordinance, but the zoning ordinance?
The zoning ordinance.
Okay.
I mean, and this one.
The same.
Or no, actually, this one wouldn't change, just the zoning.
Okay. So as far as changes to this one, what would we be looking at in relation to what's not in there now? Because I just got my two ordinances and their process flipped over. So this one, what would change in this one?
It depends on what you decide. I mean, if you decide, like, for instance, you want to prohibit a certain type of a facility, then we would have to change that in the ordinance. And then you would go back and amend the zoning ordinance as well because those are addressed via zoning too. So I, I think you have to decide what you want to do. And we can come back with some recommendations on that based off of discussion. And then we could figure out what we need to do with zoning.
Okay.
On your direction.
Okay. So let's start with, and, and I just want to, I want a couple of clarifications from Mr. Courier, if that's okay. And then what, then what I want to do is go into what we have in front of us and if anybody's got any question about what, what we're currently approving. And Kevin, if you could come up just for a second so we can hear you. Walk, walk me through the process if a customer calls you at, at your business and says, and says, okay, curbside is, side is approved or now, the way it's written here. How are they gonna, how are they gonna, how would they go about making the transaction, making the payment now?
So there are.
Or if they just wanted to prepay and come into this, into your store, right?
To do any kind of prepayment, we have a online software company that hooks up to another online software company where they can put their payment into it. And then they do that by adding their bank account. So let's say you would like a curbside order. You go onto our website, you pick the products you like, add them to your basket. And when it comes checkout time, and this is just like any other Amazon checkout thing, you have the option of either pay when you pick up or prepay through what's called Aeropay. That's one of the third-party payment systems.
Okay.
And you would click that one and you would hope that you, your bank is attached to that Aeropay system. So you would pick that bank. You would attach your account number, your routing number, and then we would transfer the funds over to us for prepayment.
Okay.
Then you would come, pick it up, drive, and you would either call us, let us know you're there, or you'd go onto that same online shopping system, tell us your car and you're here, print sell a little thing, and then we run it out to you.
Okay.
So that, that would be if it's, as it's written now with the amendment.
Okay. So, so I don't, I don't know what that third party is. So let's, let's just, and you mentioned in your, this earlier today that, like PayPal's, that doesn't work.
Yeah, no, no national brands or chains or anything you'd probably normally see.
But comparative those, comparative to those that I'm familiar with, it's similar, but it's just, it's a different company that I have to attach to my bank because I attach.
Oh, yeah.
I don't want to plug PayPal, but they've been around forever.
Been around, yeah.
So I attach my, my account through both my banks. And then I can just choose whichever one I want that to come into or go out of.
Correct.
And then, then I use it to do whatever I want to shop with.
Yep, shop with it once you hook up your account.
But it's not that nation.
Right. And since it's not PayPal, a lot of the problems we found, we had to let go of two other ones because they didn't hook up to, Alpena Community Credit Union was one of them. Another one, it didn't hook up to Wolverine. So those were kind of like tip of the iceberg issues we were facing. And then we found out a lot of, a lot of the people in town either don't have access to checking accounts. They don't have access to online banking or, or internet access and so on and so forth.
Yeah, okay.
So something like Venmo wouldn't work.
No, no, any, anything that you've probably heard of won't work because normally things that you've heard of, they've had enough marketing that they're nationally branded. And everything that is in the cannabis industry, as far as tech goes, has only been created for the cannabis industry. So it is a bunch of kids out of college that had some good software ideas. That's kind of all we have an option for right now because none of the other companies will touch us because they're federally backed.
Okay. All right. I appreciate that. I just couldn't, I wanted to picture it and.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
Kevin?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
So can I ask them, is it the same when people come into the store to make a purchase? And is it, how do you get paid when you deliver?
So when we, when they come into the store, they can either do the prepayment online, connecting the bank account, or they normally simply pay indoors. And we are one of the few, the only one I know of that we have found a credit card option. But because it's cannabis, you have to physically have the credit card. You have to physically have the debit card there. So what we mostly see is people going to our ATM, which we have a free ATM. Doesn't cost us anything on our end. They take it out of the ATM and they pay for it in cash. That's about 60% of all sales. And then about another 20% is debit card sales, transactions. But again, you have to have the physical one. We do have that hooked up to our phone. So for deliveries, we can bring a debit card out to you. But we've had issues with that because just boondocks you're going and driving into with no service. But normally it's just cash.
And you take the cash. So if you do a delivery, then you just take the cash and go?
Correct. We have one of those like little like change belts. We do, yeah, yeah.
Can I ask one quick question? You, you have an ATM inside your facility?
Correct.
Okay. Hey, Bill, is there any quick, clarify quick?
I had a question regarding, for example, an HSA savings account. How does that work with, because it's considered a medical treatment?
Oh, so the cannabis industry unfortunately right now does not take any, it's, it's a fine line between us calling it medicine and the actual medical community recognizing it as medicine. So we consider it medicine. The people who come to us uses medicine. But the insurance companies and a lot of medical communities do not consider it medicine right now. So for that, we can't play into the, the savings account for that.
Is it covered by insurance at all?
No, not right now. There, there, there are things that are coming there, but they're all privatized. There are private groups that are trying to take insurance for this. It is coming, but it's, it's slow and.
Okay. That's fine.
It's slow.
All right.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Okay. So with that, really the other, a lot of the changes in here that I would assume Montiel spearheaded as far as just clarifying some language and things, does anybody have any issues with them or?
The only thing I had was on page 12, 12-15, item two, talking about shut out her outside. The one concern that I had was to ensure that the people receiving the marijuana outside are the people that ordered it. And would that be written in here as well as just some sort of regulation or requirement that?
Well, and then here we go to Kevin again, I guess, but because he's our, he's the only one in the room that's dealt with this. But you, you clearly identify that person that's covered, governed by the state or?
Yeah. Yeah. And I, I think Montiel would know a lot about this too. It's, all purchases have to be verified that they are the actual card ID holder. So we actually have to take their ID, physically ring it into our system, the 2D barcode on the back. So it verifies that is that person. It hooks them up to our system, the state system, and then gives the, the green check.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that Granny didn't send grandson Johnny to go get.
But I don't, I don't think this, the state allows you to, so that's governed by the state. So it doesn't have to be something like that. Doesn't have to be specifically set up here.
Correct, correct. If whoever puts the order in must be the one that is identified on the card.
Okay.
Correct.
But I'll put the order in, but, but the same as doing a pickup or.
Correct.
Delivery as well.
Correct. Whoever.
Then when you deliver.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Drop it off to anyone 18 and over.
Same, same issue. No, yeah, same issue. We, we have to verify it is them, is that person that placed the order. We've had, had a couple of instances where someone does try and place the order for a family member. We get out to the house, the family member's not there. It's the, some, someone else. And we have to turn right back around and bring him back to the store.
Okay.
Delivery is unable.
ID thing every single time.
Every single time.
They've ordered several times.
Correct. And even on our website to place orders online, you have to put in your ID online. And then we have to double verify your ID when you come into the store to pick it up.
Okay. So curbside, if approved, you'll have a plan where you, you can take that thing outside? Or do you have to go out, get the license, come in, scan it, and then go back out?
We, the system we have now, we would have to, they'd have to place the order online. They have to upload their photo. And then when we go to pick it up at the car, we would take it back inside, scan it, verify it, and then go back out because the state needs to verify that they have not gone to a bunch of other dispensaries that day and made purchases. So it is, it has to be verified.
Okay. Gotcha. Okay, thanks again.
I think you. I had just something on page five, number eight, H. The term of each license shall expire. And it may be redundant, but perhaps we could insert the term of each local license shall expire on the same day. But like I said, that's perhaps redundant.
Where is that?
Page, I'm sorry, page five. Eight, H. And I'm sorry. May I add another one? Okay. Number nine, page six, number nine, C4. Six. Pardon me?
Is this different or is this the same?
This is a different, this is something.
Let's, let's go back to the, the first one then.
All right.
I want to keep scrolling back and then I'll forget what. Is that necessary since this is a local ordinance anyhow? This is only a local.
That's my question.
Everything in here is local.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't know that it would be necessary to add that word or we'd be putting it all over the place. Is that correct?
Yeah, I agree with that because we do say the term license quite frequently, so.
But go ahead. You had a second.
Pardon me now. I've tried to write these out to myself. And then maybe I'll find it in a second if anybody else has.
But we're on that page. I'll, I'll.
Okay.
On 4C, on page six, it says applicant shall include a business location plan as outlined by the state of Michigan and should also include, well, if you tell me I should do something, it doesn't mean I have to. I think we should, shall.
That's the note I had. So you have to change the modal there.
Okay, so it was state and shall include.
Yeah. And then you've crossed off that S on the end there. It's.
Shall include a daily operation schedule. Okay.
Take to move on? Just, just a grammar feature, if you don't mind. Okay, so, um, page nine.
I told Montiel she should have put it like that, which.
Sometimes when you do these. There are.
I was going to say something. Tell you right now.
You have a couple coordinating conjunctions that need on. I think because of this, A, it reads of its expiration, comma, and the license may be extended up to, because it's a full clause on both sides of that and. And the same thing goes for C.
Which, page?
Okay, I'm sorry, page nine. So of its expiration, comma, and the license may be extended.
Six days prior to the date of its expiration, comma?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And yes. And C, following in that same number 14 category, you have null and void, and then there should be another comma there and all operations before and.
I believe in commas too.
Grammar, yeah, grammar's fun.
They do.
Let's see, Grandma. Let's see, comma, Grandma. Yeah.
That was it?
Those were the, those were just some three little, I mean, so minor with all the, you know, the things that got crossed out and so forth. I think sometimes they get lost. And they're both a dependent clause, so you've got to do it.
I appreciate all the work and I'm, you know, we talked about curbside significantly. And I don't have a problem with, with how it's written. I don't have a problem with curbside. I do see, and I don't know what it is. I don't know what it is about, about a financial transaction being outside in the parking lot of the store. I don't know. Part of me is like, oh, it's whatever, you know? My personal opinion, I don't see a lot of issues, but, but I've, but I, I know that a lot of people don't share that same feeling about it. It's still got, I mean, your, your product still has a stigma. And I don't mean to be talking just to you because I can look at the camera and talk to every establishment that we have in the community. And there's, there's just issues with, with a financial transaction being, taking place outside. So I, I'm not ready to approve that mainly because, because there is a way to do it. Be it a little difficult at times, but, but, but it's what a person would have to do to make any, any online purchase. They have to go through the, the motions of, of, of setting themselves up to do that with their bank, with their, with their, the financial transaction software thing. So I guess I'm just not really sure if, if I'm convinced. I mean, I, I'm open to what you guys feel about that. But, but when there's already a way to do it, I'm not, I just don't know if we want to go to the point of, of allowing that. And it, and it really kind of has a little bit to do with, with looking in several other areas, like physical areas. Very few of them, if any, allow, allow the transaction of change, exchanging of funds to happen outside. So I don't know. I don't know if I'm ready to change to that.
I know this out of turn. I, I, I understand security is a, is a huge concern. And I, I understand. understand.
If, if you'd like to, I mean, you're kind of part of this thing because I don't want to, I don't want to find out tomorrow that we left something out, so.
Difficulty of paying online is different than inaccessibility for people unable to get access to online payment. Many of the people we have either only have cash as an option, so allowing curbside, but only allowing them to have a online bank account hooked up is, is really limiting what the ordinance is doing, which is allowing curbside, but at the same time, it's creating more barriers of entry. If security is one of the issues, cash being, I'm guessing, one of the major issues of security, and since we have thought long and hard to have a debit and credit card system inside, would it be a possibility to simply eliminate cash as an option and allow us the ability to use cards as it's a protected form of payment?
I don't, I don't know. So in that case, you would be, you would go out, and at the time that you went out to the curb to get an identification, piece of identification, and then went back in, you'd have to take that back in, so at the same time, you'd be taking a debit card and taking it into the store without the person, but, because the person's going to stay in their vehicle, so you're going to take their identification already, because you have to already, until you have a means of taking the machine outside. And then you would take their, their payment method at the same time, whether that's a card or, or even if it's cash, you'd be taking that into the store and then coming back out, comparable to a restaurant, any restaurant here in town that does the same thing.
They would still have to sign the ATM.
Yeah, so they got, you know, so you take it out with the product, so you don't have to make another trip and assuming that they're going to sign it while you're out there.
When you were sitting there discussing that, I was looking at a perception that the public could see of a, not necessarily street corner drug sale, but it's the perception of a drug sale outside, and there's still the perception, and, well, I'm slightly old, and most of my life marijuana has been illegal, and so there is still going to be a stigma, there's still a perception of the situation like this. We're not, we're trying to do this as responsibly as possible without rushing into a lot of things, and sometimes it takes baby steps to move things around. But for me, it's a perception of public for exchange of cash for product. Okay, that's my concern, I would, with the idea of the ATM card that goes in and you bring the slip out for them to sign, so it's not like they don't know what was charged. Captain, I did.
And that, that would hopefully, if, if cash and security is the, the main concern, maybe the, the card might be a, another viable option for people who, again, don't have the ability to pay online.
Plus, this goes along with the idea that transactions take place indoors.
Yeah, and I just, I just want to do two things, educate myself on how this process works, and then be sensitive to the, to a, a community that hasn't completely and fully accepted what, what's going on here. And so I just kind of want to have a balance, you know, but at the same time, at the same time, and I, I don't, I don't want to sound, I don't want to come off as, as how I'm going to come off, but it's not always my issue that somebody doesn't have a, a checking account or a savings account or, or, you know, because you've gotten to the point where, where they have to have, they have to identify themselves, so they have a license or, or a Michigan, I'm assuming that it's got to be something with a photo, so the Michigan approved identification or a driver's license, they're driving a vehicle or being driven there. So I'm trying to, I'm trying to, to, to make this accessible to, to, to your clients or customers, but at the same time, you know, there's got to be some, some sensitivity to, to the rest of the general public, and. And I'm, so now I'm trying to wrap my head around, okay, so if, if we're not going to have a cash transaction taking place outside in a curbside, so they're going to give you a card, well, if they have a card, it's tied to a bank, and if they have, so now, so now why didn't they just do it online? And they might not have access to, to the internet, then go to the public library, and there's free internet there. I mean, it's just so, there's, there's so many ways to do this. And I'm not, I'm not proposing that we make, you know, we sit up here and make people jump through all these hoops, but, but it's available. So I don't know, but then if, well, then if the library is out because, because obviously they have an issue, it may or may not have an issue with getting in and out of their car and walking into a, into a, you know, a place other than perhaps their home, so, so the, now you're back to that, so I don't know.
I have a couple of questions. So can people like call and put in an order, or does it have to be online?
We're one of the few dispensaries that does allow call-in orders because again, for the same access to internet and computer, it's, it's difficult for the, the public to place orders online, and for the prepayment system, phone orders would not be available as an option, because they cannot prepay over the phone.
Okay. And can I ask, when we were in the depths of COVID and you could do curbside, were these still issues you had then, and how did you get through them?
They were not, we accepted cash and card when we were doing the COVID curbside, and there were no concerns, no issues.
I have a question, if it's okay with everyone, just, this can't be the first time that other establishments have run into this same problem, because there are other people who have had establishments such as yours in other states do or has there, or do we know if there is any research that's been done on how they're handling this? Rather than reinventing the wheel, try to find out what they did and if they were successful. And I was just curious if there's any way that kind of research can be looked at.
Well, even within the state, maybe we don't have to go very far to, to, Montiel did a little bit of legwork already to find out, you know, what, what basically some of the regional, what some of the regional neighbors are doing and what's in their ordinance. So, so it really, and it's kind of all over the place a little bit. There are some that allow and some that don't. Some specifically say exactly what ours says, right, what this suggestion is, and I'm not going to pick out which communities there are because I'm bound to get them wrong, but, so it's not like we're really reinventing anything, we're just, we're just deciding now what fits our community, what fits what we want to do. I had a follow-up question to Cindy's, and so when, when you were doing curbside because of COVID, how, how long did that, how long were you doing that? Do you know right off?
About four months.
Four months?
So it started organically. So we started curbside with that one, and then that started in April, May, July, August, then September. So four or five months.
Okay. Yeah, and it, so, you know, so there was a bit of a test bed there. I had no idea that you were doing it. I had no idea, to be honest with you, that, I mean, because I'm not day to day, I didn't know that, that there were issues with that and that the state said that you could, and then they pulled the rug out when that was over, and then all of a sudden you couldn't. That was part of my education to find out that that's how that happened. And so, which has kind of been part of my, a little bit of my argument, that, that to me, whoever's carrying that paper sack in or out of the store doesn't really matter to me because, because it's either you taking it out or them going in and getting it, the same paper sack is being carried by a human to, to their vehicle. And so, so therein lies the four months of a test bed with, with full-on transactions outside that nobody had any issues with. I feel like I've been arguing with myself for the last 20 minutes. Don't take me away, Eric, just, I'll be fine.
Montiel, I guess that, that was what I meant by not reinventing the wheel. There must be some communities that are close enough to us and our, and the attitude and what's happening in post-COVID world and what was done and so on and so forth to have been able to work through this issue.
Well, I mean, all I've seen is what their ordinance state, I haven't talked to any of them specifically, but I mean, I'm sure we could just survey a few of them and ask them how they're addressing the situation. That would be something we could do.
And, and you, and we can get all that information and bring it back, because we, you know, we need it.
Okay, they got 14 shops?
I have one other suggestion, in most of the ordinance, we make reference to, like the nuisance ordinance, we refer to it. I would like in this, and maybe it's we add another general requirements for curbside, so they have to have a site plan approval, but there should be something in here, in my opinion, that what if they, what if they don't comply with that? It should be able, we should be able to revoke it, it should be spelled out clearly in here. So we can't say, okay, this is parking spot number one, this is where you're able to do it, but then maybe somebody decides, well, I don't like parking spot number one, and I can only put my cameras over here, so this is where I'm doing it. They can't, you know, they have to follow the site plan. I would like it to see it spelled out somewhere clearly in there.
I had a similar note, you know, after my discussions with you all, and I think this came from Danny, any deviation to the site plan must be approved, but we could elaborate upon that.
Think if it's minor, staff can approve it. I think if it's beyond minor, then it would have to go back to planning commission. That's my opinion.
Billy, you may have a suggestion, that we can bring something back to that effect?
Yep.
So something that's along the lines of any deviation to the approved site plan requires either staff approval or planning commission approval for any changes? Yeah, okay.
Well, that leaves a bit of discretion for, for us, so, you know, I don't know, we should probably talk about what triggers something going to planning commission. Yeah.
I mean, I would think that the biggest concern would be availability of camera positioning, which the state of Michigan also requires that they see the curbside plan as well, so I can look at their checklist and see what's not theirs.
Okay.
So it comes back as clean as possible, where are we going to be at with, with, with all curbside pickup orders must be paid for in advance, exchange of payment shall not occur outside? Where are we going to be at with that?
Well, if, if they give the debit card to them to go inside, you're paying inside.
Right.
So. Otherwise, I, again, perceptions of cash for product outside, it's, it's back to street corner days.
Well, it depends on what side, what, what argument Matt makes. Because I could play on this one.
Say to you, fall on to yourself.
Yeah.
Because it's pretty well regulated, in my opinion, even the cash, it's a few steps into the building. And you've done it, and we haven't heard of any issues from that, but I will side with majority on that, honestly.
Yeah, and I guess I am too, I mean, I see, I see, you know, you go out with a, you walk out with a menu folder thing, and you hand it to the person and say, please put your payment and your identification in this folder, and then when they put, take it back out the window, it's just a black folder, and then you walk back into the store with it. Who's to know what, what's in the folder, whether it's $40 or a debit card, I guess? And I don't know, maybe that's what you already do, I don't know, if I keep, if I'm going to, if my whole day i- is going out and back and forth out into a parking lot, regardless of whether it's on video or not, and I'm walking back and forth with cash, I'm probably going to want it in a folder or an envelope or something anyhow, but not that we've got, you know. People probably pay a lot more when they go to the restaurant and, you know, and pick up a meal for five people, you're probably spending more than somebody would spend at your place anyhow, and I've never heard of anybody knocking somebody over in the, in the Applebee's parking lot and taking their money. So, see, I plugged a restaurant, there you go, but they're in the township, so, you know, so now I'm just kind of struggling with whether it's, whether it's an issue with me or not, and it, and really, in the end, I guess it's not, especially when it transpired for several months without, without any incidents, but. So. I'll go with the majority as well, but it doesn't look like we're going to, if everybody says they're going to go with the majority.
It won't be a majority.
I, I guess, I, I'm, honestly, I guess, I've just kind of talked myself into, it's fine with me, it doesn't really, I guess it just doesn't really matter. I've always wanted to be that government, just gets out of the way and says, what can we do, rather than what can't you do? And to me, if somebody's going to give you a card, they've already got to give you your, their license or something, so you've already got to go back in anyhow. I don't, I don't know if I've got an issue with whether it's a card or 50 bucks, I don't know.
Yes, that would be part of my, my issue would be the transactions and how, you, you do have to show ID, how do you verify how much money or how much product was exchanged at that time without some kind of oversight? I don't have a problem with it either, just it would be record keeping, it would be.
And that's all in the database, that's all taken care of by.
Because it's prepaid, so then, well.
Yeah, every transaction goes in the database, right? Is that a state database in it?
Yes, it is highly, highly regulated and tracked, and we actually have a full-time in-house accountant now, so it is even more tracked.
So let, let's just say somebody came to the, and they ordered, and you came out to their car and they gave you cash for whatever, how, how does that, where does it go from there? What happens?
So you would take it back inside after you scan your entry, and we all have scan cards at this point to get in, you would go back to the point of sale, take the money, pay for it like any other transaction, take the change out with the, if it was cash, take the change out with the products and the ID, back out to the car.
So there's, okay, that's a check and balance type of system, and it seems to be built right in.
But they're still doing a transaction inside?
Yep, for the cash, yes.
Cash or ATM card, you still have to go inside to run it or to do this because you're not going to give them the product out in the parking lot and collect the cash from this when you haven't done the other part. So as far as that concerned, then we're still, shall not occur outside. I mean, you're, you're getting, say, the curbside service, but the transaction is still occurring inside.
And the point of sale.
At the point of sale.
All the tracking and the, how to get product out with the state, yeah.
Okay. So it would basically. Facilities and establishments shall not provide drive-through service, comma, but may provide curbside service based on an approved site plan. We would strike all curbside pickup orders must be paid for in advance. And leave exchange of payment. No, it would, it would go back to what you just said. It would revert to.
The transactions must be.
Financial transaction must occur inside.
Right.
Because that's where what you just said is actually happening. The transact, the financial transaction is happening outside. The transaction, the financial transaction is happening outside, is that clear enough language, Bill, that somebody's? Not gonna, so. So it would. Would say. Yeah, all of that, all curbside pickup orders must be paid in advance, exchange of payment shall not occur outside, that would all be struck, and it would just say, but may provide curbside service based on approved site plan, period. All financial transactions must take place indoors. Is that clear enough that it's?
You'd want to strike that sentence, obviously. Or that second sentence.
The sentence, yeah.
But, you know, going back to number one, it says all business operations of a facility or establishment must occur.
That's already there, okay, I got you, so you wouldn't have to state it twice, you've already said it. I missed it.
So you're saying a fi- financial transactions must occur indoors still.
Cause that's that's number one, all business operations of a facility or establishment must occur indoors.
We can say all business operations, including. Financial transactions. Must occur indoors, just so there's a little more specificity to it.
And they have, but I guess what I'm getting, I mean, we can put that, but they have to anyhow. They have to go back to the store because that's the only way to get them to scan their license and put them in and put their financial, the whole transaction. Product and the payment into the system. Cause you don't, you can't carry that stuff outside, I would assume, I don't know.
Right, without identification.
Why do we mention financial trend transactions at all, just leave it as all business operations of, just leave it as is?
That's fine.
I mean, that way you're not, I mean. You're not specifying that because we don't need to.
Right.
Because we understand that the transaction is actually happening inside.
Yeah. I just want to make sure that it's clear and that we're not.
And and just just because in my mind, all business operations of a facility or establishment must occur inside, and and that can include payment and stuff. But to me, that sentence means you can't take them their product. That's how I read that. Have to have.
Down to say, but may provide. Curbside. Or you could say with the exception of curbside.
Okay, because you have to put that, otherwise they're stuck inside the building with everything.
Well, okay, so. So why, why is number one in there in the first place? What is that, what other, give me an idea of what what another business operation might be that they would do outside? Other than grow.
We're doing delivery.
Delivery, but the state allows you to do delivery.
Correct, if it's approved, yeah, yeah.
I just wondered why that was in there.
I still. Theoretically don't know why the state approves delivery and the local community decides whether you can do curbside, it just doesn't make sense, if I can take it to your house. But I can't take it out into the parking lot without. Local folks.
I understand.
Do it, it doesn't make sense that they set it up that way, but that's, that's the way it is.
Well, maybe they did it that way because every site is different, maybe we regulate the site it's on, maybe there's not room for people, maybe they only have one parking spot, I don't know.
Yeah.
I would agree with that. And you can deliver across jurisdictions too.
Okay, so that, yeah, yeah, right. Cause I, yeah, that's been done. So that's in there because this is general requirements for operations of. Of everything, so all business operations of a facility or establishment must occur indoors.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna play devil's advocate for just a second. It's just, because this will be the next thing. Well, if I can deliver it. And I can have you pull up into my parking lot and I can go out and take cash from you and I can take it inside. Then why can't I have a drive-through window where you pull up and you give me your cash and your thing and I run it and I give it to you through the window? So the next request is going to be. You know, from somebody's going to be, we want drive-through and it's no different than what we're doing already.
Is that city or state that's?
Now, the one, the one difference to that is that the zoning ordinance does provide that, you know, drive-throughs have to meet certain qualifications in terms of having enough space and. You know, having, having a backup plan for stacking cars and things of that nature. So it gets back to their, you know, the site plan approval, is there enough room there to do a drive-through? Some facilities, there may be, some facilities, there wouldn't be. But that, you know, that's the next logical step, which is if I can. If I can walk it out to you, why can't I hand it out a window to you?
So I I have no objection with window pickup. I actually like it better than curbside.
I do too. I think there's more room for security and oversight and.
Well, I'm not saying in lieu of. Curbside, I mean, I just don't understand why we eliminate drive-through windows.
Doesn't that have to do with how much space, though, that it comes down to the practicalities?
But if they can get approval from planning commission because their site it can, you know.
Right.
Accommodate it, I don't understand. But. Guess while this is open, I, we should consider all options, so we don't have to keep opening it back up.
Well, I. So with drive-through pickup, I guess my question on that would be, are you, are you saying you want them to be able to preorder and just pick up at a window? Or are you saying they can come up and order right then and there, just like you would a traditional drive-through and then pick it up? Because those are differences in the ordinance in terms of, is this strictly just a pickup window? Or is it, I'm ordering and, you know, you're talking to someone through, you know, like you would if you went to McDonald's, so I think.
I I personally look at it as a pickup window, so they've done what they needed to do, they, you know, they're going to pay and pick up.
Because there are some. Changes to the zoning ordinance that we are intending on making to differentiate between those two, but they're not currently in yet.
Okay. So these are local. Ordinances that don't allow for the drive-through at this point, is.
So in our zoning ordinance, there are some districts where drive-through, traditional drive-through is not allowed.
Okay.
Other ones where where they are, and there's criteria for, you know, what conditions you can and can't have a drive-through, like stacking and other things. So we just, we need to be clear on what our expectation is. Or either drive-through or curbside, or maybe you just let the zoning ordinance dictate if it can be allowed or not.
So. Am I hearing the. Direction to staff to come back. With a revision to allow for. Drive-through. As well.
I have no issue with that.
I I don't have an issue with allowing it.
Again, by zoning, because some facilities just can't do it.
Right.
Right, right, so that would be.
Yeah. And I don't know what magic you would work, Bill, with with this section, but. I think if that's the direction, we can wordsmith it.
So operations with drive-through service, operations with curbside service, maybe two separate categories. For Monteal's. Description of how things are zoned, it seems to me.
Well, I mean, if we're gonna allow drive-through, we've got them in zoning ordinance.
Which we're going to anyhow, more than likely because of the micro-business thing.
But, you know.
Right now, doesn't it say there's no drive-through of medical marijuana at all use? But it already said.
Well, it says that in this ordinance, but I don't believe it says that specifically in the zoning ordinance. There are just overall general drive-through requirements on a district in particular.
They recently had a thing with the planning commission where you had one building wanted to drive-through and the other one wanted to drive-through, but there wasn't sufficient space to be able to do so, so by zoning. It 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 depends on the building itself, whether you can or you can't, and not necessarily is. Their building going to be allowed to have a drive-through because of where it is, how the shape is, what space. All of them like this, so it's, it's as a case by case basis, I would imagine.
We go off. Off the board here and. Ask Mr. Kramer, is it consumer, what, if he's got, I mean, you've been involved in this process for a couple of years now.
Quite frankly. Drive-throughs are. One of the worst things that ever happened to food. So bringing it into cannabis dispensaries, I think opens up a number of problems that aren't necessary in that industry. Nobody's in a big damn hurry when they're flying around trying to get between lunch and the next appointment. It's, it's a little bit more deliberate as going into these places, if you guys have noticed, it's like going into a bank vault. Security would be the only reason that a drive-up window, not drive-through, drive-up. For, you know, say at their store, I'm just going to mention their store, because I'm familiar with it, in the back of the store. There's a couple of parking lot, parking spots there. And in situations like that, if someone pulled up there and there was a way to transact there, it's out of the way, there's no traffic jams or anything, it would have to be scheduled, which I would think would be smart anyway, even if you had a drive-up window. Unless there's all your customers want to do it that way, which I doubt. Most of the people like myself, I'd like to go in there and look at it, smell it, you know, that's part of the experience. But if you can't make that happen because of physical disabilities or whatever. Have the ability for curbside would be primary. The drive-up, if you have a facility, you could do that, that would be reasonable, and that's a secure, but it would be order ahead online. You don't get to say, come up, well, you could say, can you add some lozenges to that? Or, you know, I'm allowed to have gummies, you know, so. But the green or the cannabis itself, that's something you got to order ahead of time online, because they got to go weigh it and go through the whole process there. It's not like you're ordering fries, you know, where it's just a set thing, it's in the, in the cooker. But you, the ordering online, that makes a lot of sense, I don't do it because, like I said, I'm old, I like to go there and smell it, you know. But the bottom line is for security, the drive-up window would make sense. Order online, drive up with a schedule. Because I don't want to go there and find a line around the building, these guys do a good job, I mean, they're pretty popular, you know, sometimes when everybody wants to go there, it'd be a line around the block, you know. It has to be a scheduled pickup, even on a curbside thing. I was going to suggest that, I was going to ask questions. Was there a complaint about the curbside pickup, or is it just something that was out of sight, out of mind, and all of a sudden?
Well, it, yeah, it just came to our attention because the state allowed them to without our discretion during covid.
Yeah.
And then, and then that's when.
Good idea.
That's when it came to light, that's when it kind of came to our attention.
Yeah. And I, I don't want to see two windows where they take the money and then lines of cars out into the street, you know. You want to go inside and sample it and look at it, that's fine, but drive-up window, if they had the facilities for it, would be a security issue, would be a bad, but. Curbside makes a lot of sense to me. I mean. Just, it doesn't make sense to me personally. Makes sense.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know. I appreciate the whole, what you're trying to do with the curbside and it appeases clients. I definitely would don't want this to keep coming back every couple of months.
That's what I was just thinking is that, you know, if we're gonna. Overhaul it, why don't we just figure out the drive-through at the same time, so we're not. Coming back two months from now saying. What about this?
Well, I look at the drive-through, it's same if I call in my prescriptions at my pharmacy, because I'm going to go pick them up, you know, I call them in in the morning, they tell me they're going to be ready in the afternoon. Go do whatever I do, run, drive through the drive-through, get them, and I'm off. It's convenient.
Would they be required to do a special use permit for? Drive-throughs to determine whether it's feasible for the facility to do so, or whether it's allowable for it to do so. Again, going back to this most recent thing with the two offices by Mancino's and that other. It's not that they just decide they want to have it and they're going to put it in.
No, at all, that whole site plan's got to be approved by the planning commission room.
And there are some areas where it's not allowed. Correct.
Right, and and our ordinance specifically addresses a traditional drive-through with car stacking, but a curbside pickup where you don't have the same experience. It's a little bit faster and you typically don't see cars stacking.
So. Do you want us to bring something back, explore, you know, with, to include?
I do, I I would like to see that.
That's fine. That's fine, because really, from where we sit. There's nothing really different going on, as a matter of fact, it's.
All has to be approved through a site plan anyway.
Yeah. And then the security issues with that window are, that's all state level stuff, I'm assuming all that's got to be approved by the state as far as internally. We don't, we don't do that, right? Okay. So as far as the window is being secure and all that, whatnot, just like the doors are, so I don't know that I've. I don't know that I've ever seen one. I don't know that I've ever, because I. Is it, do they have a? Drive-through in Escoda?
It's a recent occurrence.
Okay.
In Michigan, the drive-through. But it's, it's happening, and Lansing was the first one.
Okay, I mean, if we put it in there, nobody uses it, it's okay.
It's fine too.
But if it's in there and somebody wants to take advantage of it, they can.
Yeah, because they've got to pass muster with the state and their security issues and our planning and zoning. With.
Yeah, planning commission's, I plan, they gotta, they're gonna have to convince them that.
And we, yeah, and we've had several locations that we've denied. Drive-through just based on stacking and. Turns in your. The one that you mentioned was like a turning radius.
Right.
Width thing to get back out, so.
And you can't have them in your board out there.
Yeah, the alley there and things, so, okay, yeah, awesome.
The only thing that I'm concerned about is time to make all these changes and then to bring back. A recommendation on the micro businesses and the growers.
That's, it can be the next meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, because we've got to double check the zoning ordinance, make sure we're not. Doing something that's in conflict with the other end. You know. We don't want to solve one problem and create another one.
And potentially get feedback from the planning commission as well, and I mean, there is a January 10th. Meeting. So there could be some discussion on it.
Okay. Yeah, you guys are doing the work, so I'll kind of leave that to your discretion as to when you think you might be able to get it back for Annas agenda.
Postpone until first or second meeting.
Well, this was a first reading, it doesn't, nothing states that it has to come back at the next meeting, the second reading, right?
Correct, just to just.
And just leave it at.
Federer just said you can't pass it at the first. Reading unless there's some emergency situation that's.
Okay.
So we can shoot for the first meeting in February, I just don't. Think we can give a, I can give you a progress report on how it's going.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's shoot for that. All right, thanks for hanging in there for that, I knew it was going to be a little long, but I wanted to make sure that we can kind of get this. Kind of get that wrapped up. Okay. This is out.
During the closed session to discuss updates on swimming water litigation and pending ARC family enterprises in versus unit taxes.
Are you a pro Tim Johnson? Counselor Mitchell?
Yes.
Counselor Walter?
Yes.
Okay, just for, before Charlie shuts that off, just for anybody that's. Kept on online, we won't be making any, any action after closed session, you're welcome to stay online, but we'll just come back in a j.